Okay. Calling this work session of the Clarkdale Historic Preservation Commission meeting to order. It is 6:30. Gus, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Westcott, Commissioner Snyder, Commissioner Muller, Vice Chair Stein.
Present.
And Chair Gabbard.
Here. Okay, public comments. You know the rules.
That's right. Welcome. Drake Mink is my name. I was the lead on the project when this went up about 10 years or 15 years ago. So if you have any questions about any of the whatever, how it was done, who did it, how it was accomplished, or anything like that, I'd be glad to answer any of those questions this evening or any input that I can, as you wish and so forth, so, and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll be really helpful. Okay, so moving on to historic markers. I don't know if we did the roll call. It's okay. That's okay. I don't know if the staff has anything they want to go through, but I thought it might be helpful to just quickly go through some of the things that were discussed in the last meeting, just sort of in general. There were, I think, several things that I heard as we walked around and looked at the existing signs. Not to put down any of the hard work that Drake has done, but there were some themes that I saw. Just a couple of them, we saw some redundancy with elements of the stories that were being told, I think with the mining story and particularly with the town's residential architecture. Some of those things, I think, could be consolidated onto one sign or maybe reorganized. I heard some comments about some stories that might seem irrelevant, particularly with the Clark family and their properties in New York. I heard some positive things about the postcards, but maybe not seriating the postcards by date, things like that. Updates to the sign about local businesses. And then two of the really big ones, of course, were increasing the inclusivity in our storytelling, highlighting community diversity, but making sure that it's in high-traffic areas, not just in locations where those communities were living. And then another big one was reducing the amount of text on the sign so that readers would spend maybe just a few minutes on each sign. And if we wanted to highlight more detail and have more text or more information, having that information on servers linked to QR codes. I think those were the big things. I don't know if there's anything else that the other commissioners picked up on that we might want to just cover real quick as a little bit of background.
Now I'm on. No, I was on before. I toured the town and I looked at the panels. And I want to thank you for the work that you did 10 years ago because it's quite a foundation from which we can now move forward. So it was, you can tell that a tremendous amount of work went into it and it really is a great start. But it is always a good idea to refresh and take a look. History isn't static. And so, you know, there's so much more that we know and we can add to it. So I had some ideas on how to start a conversation that can embrace the comments that you just shared from our last meeting. Is it okay if I jump in? You're all right with that? So the first thing that I, and embracing everything that was contributed at our last meeting. We, I took a look at this project and I divided it into two, two things that I thought that we should look at and consider because this is a tremendous undertaking. And there's a lot of information and there's a huge population, both now and from our history, that we'd like to embrace and recognize. And so I looked at this project in, as a, as twofold. First and foremost, there's form, like what, how we want to present the information. We have a framework and we have a series of panels. Some of them are easily two-sided, others are, as I walked around, it's like looking at the backside would be a little challenging, especially the one by the Historical Society. It really wasn't set up to be viewed from both sides. But I think we all agree that we want to embrace a complete demographic of the area. And we want to make sure that every panel is reflective and doesn't isolate or segregate. But, but it's how are we, the form is kind of, how do we communicate all of the content? And I'll get to the content in just a minute because I'm sure a lot of people have been contemplating content. But the, I looked at it in terms of the what and where. So our chairman last meeting actually brought up the importance of proximity. We have these panels in various parts around town and we have a map. And so what I did was I stood in front of each panel and appraised the prospect, both in front of me and behind. There's one very close to my end of the neighborhood that's in the historic, there's street signs that say historic neighborhood. And it's not a lamb chop, it's the little triangle. I don't, I know we don't call it a lamb chop, that's the one down there, but pork chop, lamb chop. So as I looked in one direction, there's a brand-new house that was constructed in the 90s. Dave Williams lives in it now. So it was fashioned after one of the original houses, but it's brand spanking new. And then in the other direction, there's a house that's been altered tremendously. It has a second story. So trying to tie those together, you know, what to do when you're looking in those two directions. But would this not be a great place to highlight architecture? So I looked at those and then I also went out to the panel that's at First North on the bend. I think it's 13th and First North. It's number nine, number nine. So I, I just wanted to, we need to think about proximity. What would be important, what would be the relevant information at each location? We don't want to isolate people, so we don't want to put a panel in front of our nation at the far end of First North by the smoke shop and say, yes, you know, we have a community that's diverse and this is where our Native Americans live. And 100 years ago, this is where our Hispanic population lived. So we don't want to isolate them, but if we could think thematically for each panel, what would we like to highlight at those panels? But also, how does it tie to the proximity or the environment? Make it germane to the person standing there. And so I have one example that I kind of mocked up to support this, and I'm just throwing out ideas here. So we want proximity and placement when possible. However, at each panel, we want to make sure that it reflects the multifaceted nature of our community, the diversity and inclusion. And not only of the human collection, but also the environment. So there are certain panels that'll be really, the content would be more germane for environmental considerations. I mean, I think it'd be really great if there were an image of the river before the slag pile. That slag pile is something to see when you're on the river. And wouldn't it be kind of cool to see what it looked like before the slag pile? So some before and afters. And then it's the what, where, the information can and should entice the audience to move around the community. So maybe there could be a teaser, a spoiler at each panel, be that in the QR code or in the minimal text that we have that keeps people moving around. On one of my walks, I ran into some folks that were staying at the hotel and they were reading the panels by the Historical Society. And I said, so what do you think of the panels? And, you know, are you reading those? And, and it was a married couple, obviously, by their dynamic. And one of them was really into reading every detail and the other one was tapping their foot, watching my pronouns. What, he was tapping his foot while she was reading everything. So, so it's the what and where, thinking about the information that we want to collect, where to place it, how to make it germane to the location of the panel, but also keep it diverse so that we're not isolating anyone. The other thing that I thought about was how. 10 years, a number of the panels are broiled, roasted, baked. The material that we use for outside. So I, there are some new, and what we really have are a series of small murals going up. And so there's something called blaze pigment printing processes where we could, depending on, and I didn't take any of your signs apart to figure out that they were put together. But we could move forward with our material being fired in a ceramic process onto, I think the panels are eight-by-10-ish. Does that sound about right? Bigger, but at individual tiles that would fit into the framework. So that, for instance, if something needed to change, like if we do tourism and we're supporting a hotel or a winery that doesn't make it, it would be easy to remove that tile and replace it. So something, a medium that's flexible for us, but also can capture both photographic images and text and blaze pigment printing process. So, and the other thing that I looked at as far as that, how we put things up there is the original organization, and I'm, I can totally be interrupted and clarify or answer questions, but I kind of put some notes together. Each, each frame, the nine-panel frames, each of the nine panels is a unique image or a unique print of one of the journal articles about mining. It's great information. But our eye, well, our mind, as we view visual imagery or we read imagery, our mind processes. It's called the study of semiology, but we, we look at signs and symbols and we process them. And so quite often, we look through, I look through an eight-panel window when I look out from my living room. Or we can look out a nine-panel window. We don't break the image that we're seeing through our windows into panels. We process it into one big image. So I don't think we need to let the framework on these beautiful window screens that we're using dictate how we arrange the information. Because a viewer, certainly text needs to be organized, but a viewer can look through those divisions. However, we still need to consider that in Western society or in Western literacy, we read from top to bottom and left to right. And so our, our information should go that way. So kind of a how, I'm, and please, I don't have access to the computer graphic programs. I used to have access for free. Let me make sure I'm not giving you mine. There we go. So if you want to take one of these and pass it down, I'm not sure that I have one for you, sir. Okay, but I'm happy to share mine. So this is not the greatest. So admittedly, this is not the best sample of a draft graphic document, but it's the best I could do on my word processor. So this is panel number nine that's on First North that looks out over the railroad tracks. So the upper image I pulled off the internet this morning, it's the smelter when we still had the stack. So that's looking, and my husband is going to be so embarrassed because I'm not going to get this right, but I think that's looking north from that score. North, that way. Okay, northeast, you Michael, northeast. But if you pivot just a smidge, you're looking at the cement plant. Well, both of those are excellent examples of industry in Clarkdale, right? And, and they're germane to that particular location. And so, reading from top to bottom or left to right, the smelter came first and then the cement plant came later, chronologically, of course. And so I have a big landscape image, obviously you can see, of the smelter and then the cement plant. And then we provide a minimal amount of text, the smelter, give its dates, whatever kind of details we want to put in there. And then, you know, introduction in large font. And then we move on to the cement plant. So it gives people a cursory introduction to a site that they can see while they're standing there. This is where it was, there it was. And then I couldn't remember QR code today, but that little more box is for the QR code that you were talking about, like for more information. So, and I'm just throwing this out as a suggestion, but this is what I was thinking. We could even have a nine panels that's all just one portrait image. I mean, if we wanted a portrait of Clark, because there aren't enough of them out there in the world, we could put a big one somewhere, maybe the one down. Just kidding. So it was just an idea and we can organize things chronologically or thematically as we go through. But our first discussion was about inclusion and the various communities that lived and worked here. And I just thought it would be good to get a big picture of how we want to organize our information, what we want to communicate and how we communicate it before we get down into the weeds. Because we have the Historical Society, there's certainly more research that can be done. It depends on how thorough we want to be. So that's kind of the form. As far as content is concerned, there are so many ways to look at content and we could organize it once again thematically or chronologically. But the first question that we often ask ourselves when we're, well, some folks do, when they're studying history is who? It's the people, right? So the who part of it is the indigenous populations, the diversity of the indigenous populations. Because it's not just, you know, one indigenous population. We're going to embrace Spanish colonialism because they were here as well, right? 19th century immigration and movement, there's diversity there as well. Not all European immigrants came from the same place. There's the mining community people we should think about. There's the cement plant community to think about. There's tourism, the people who've come in since, the wine industry. You know, we talk about businesses, the who behind the Miller's Market. And then here's one for Michael and probably Carrie. There used to be a building at the bottom of this hill by the lamb chop, pork chop, and they burned it down like as a training. What building was that? It was here when I moved here, but I don't remember what it was for.
The last I remember what it was actually viewed is that, it might have been Jocelyn, there was some sort of a car, it wasn't like garage. Here at Clark Theater or Clark Repair, and then prior to that, I heard it's old, thought there was actually a restaurant.
Yeah, so.
I heard restaurant in some kind of old hotel.
I'm not going to presume that building is there now.
No. It was, didn't, they. Burned on it, yeah, so. So, so there are buildings that aren't here anymore. But, you know, there's got to be images of them and even though they're gone, do we want to include those? I was thinking about Sucasa. I mean, there's a part of our history, it disappeared during COVID, right? But that was a vibrant business and just because it's gone now, you know, and it's, it's like, how are we going to embrace history? Are we only going to look at the slice from the, in the 20s and 30s or are we, are we going to look at the whole history? So, so, you know, I'm thinking in those terms. And then also, when you think about the human history of it, pictures of the Fourth of July Parade and concerts in the park and Halloween. I mean, there's parts of our history, it may only be 30 years old that I know of, but it, I think it was going on before I got here. There used to be a family that walked in the Fourth of July Parade. Yeah, it was huge. I mean, at one point, it was like bigger than a marching band. So there's a lot of human history that can be embraced. When I think in terms of the what, so those are the who's, the what, certainly our architecture, we want to embrace somewhere. And we can do that at a panel in, you know, one architectural style per panel someplace or, you know, I don't have the answer to that, but we certainly want to address our, our architecture. The where, so as an environmental historian, it's, it's more about the place than it is the people for environmental historians. So there's the geomorphic change in the area and that's when I started to think about the vegetation and the slag pile, you know, before and after pictures of the slag pile. And then how do we, how do we document and embrace Upper and Lower Clarkdale, Patio Town, Centerville, our nation? The Verde Valley at large, High Desert, Arizona at large, is that anything that we want to tie into these panels? And then, once again, you know, I'm, I'm talking thematically now. But when you talk in terms of the when questions, it's like, how far back do you want to go? We have choosy-goot, you know, in, in view of our town. So do we want to go back 1,000, you know, of the current era, 1,500 of the current era, just start during the 19th century? Now, how are we going to put temporal parameters on this project? Because at least my, my thought is we were talking about the multifaceted nature of our community and how it was brought forward, that sometimes it's marginalized. There's a lot of, there's, a small town like this is very complex. And we owe this project a thoughtful and thorough investigation so that we can make sure we cover as much as possible. And if we don't cover something, our community will understand how it is that we came to prioritize, we only have so much space and how we approach things. Does that make sense? And then, you know, when you're, so it's the who, what, where, when, how and whys of a historical study. And the how and why is really the environment led itself through mining to bring about Clarkdale in that regard. Employment is what brought people here. And then emancipation, I was looking for three Es. Environment, employment, emancipation. People came here to free themselves of economic restraints that were elsewhere. I mean, European immigration came here for that reason. People traveled west for opportunities. So we have a tremendous, it's a huge net. And it just seems like we should get a lot of information from as many people as possible to see how we can rassle it into, how many of these things do we have? 13? We have 13 panels, but each panel has 26, yeah. So, so, so this is what I've been thinking about in terms of how can we take something that was such a brilliant idea and build on it from there? Okay, I'm done.
No, and that's all good. And I agree with you that I feel like, although we're, we're trying not to be, you know, totally situational, that, that there's, needs to be some tie to where the panel is to what you're looking at. That's what keeps it interesting for us, you know, tourists that are coming to the area. And your example here that you gave us of the cement plant and, and the smelter were great. And, and in that situation, there's two sides to that panel. So, because I feel like there's a big part of the story of Clarkdale right there on that panels. And I, and I'm initially, I mean, I like your idea of having the pictures top, bottom and the, the text in the middle. We talked about it some. I don't think it needs to have a lot of text because I think you lose people. There are some, like you were saying, the couple you talked to, want to stand there and read all of it. But I, I feel like a majority of people, you're walking around, you're doing a foot tour, walking tour. You want to, you, you want to just be able to get the, you, you need the reader's digest version of what you're looking at and why you're looking at it. And then, you know, if you're somebody that wants to know more information, there's other places you can go to get more information. So I, I like, I like this initial proposal on the layout of that. And I, and it, and the one you're talking about in the island there, the, the houses, you know, you need to, I think that's a great place to talk about the architecture. So I, I like that. I like that idea. I like that proposal.
My thought was, some of them are going to lend themselves to two-thirds imagery. And so I'm a pretty formulaic gal. They're divided up into nine squares. And, you know, there's, there's three verticals and three horizontals. And so if we thought in terms of two-thirds of the panel is image, because people, it's, you can process a lot of information visually and one-third or less is text. And certainly, we have to go with a large font. And these are things that are kind of above my pay grade. I mean, I can talk in terms of visual literacy and I can talk in terms of processing and semiology, but there are graphic designers and there, you know, people who could provide us with a tremendous amount of support. And then also, there are the people who do the work in this. And, and I'm not saying we have to go with this, but the ceramic tiles with the, with the printing process, the fired process. You know, they have an idea how to work on those things. So, so once, once we understand what images, once we understand the content and what kind of images we'd like to use, and some images lend themselves to landscape and some lend themselves to portrait view. So we can work that way, but certainly text below your waist is not a good idea anywhere. So, thanks.
I like the idea of initial starting point, sort of maybe looking at archives to look for things like continuity in architecture, environmental change, town and cultural traditions. Some of that is captured in, what is it, the, the book with all the pictures, the series? I'm blanking. They have them for Clarkdale and Cottonwood and Pretty Valley. Yeah, I think a lot of that information was mined from, from our Historical Society. So maybe that's a starting point as well. And then I know we had talked before about inviting the community to provide information that they thought was important. I don't know if, you know, oral history collection and being able to connect that with QR codes, that would be really cool, being able to hear people tell stories of their recollections of things that are happening in town as well. And I really like your idea of having, having images above and below and connecting to the location. I think that's, that's great.
I happened to share a meal with a person who grew up in Clarkdale. I've known of him for years, but I've never actually sat down and spoken to him. And I was just surprised to learn that he grew up in your house. And, because I thought the Westcotts had always inhabited that particular house at that location. But, oh, really? So, but, you know, there, there are even younger people than our elders who grew up here and can share stories. And so perhaps there's a way to, in the weekly newsletter that comes out, to put out a call for, and maybe people can send in an email with, you know, an idea or paragraph, or here's something that happened or somehow to embrace the entire community on this. Because that's, I mean, there are people who have a lot of tales to tell. We can't share them all, but we can start putting them together. And I like the QR code and oral histories. That's a great idea. Cynthia, thank you. Cynthia, I saw her at the plant sale and she was talking about census records. And so the demographics of Clarkdale at different time periods, that's the kind of text that can be read that isn't tedious or boring. Like 1920, this population, that population, you know, where people were working. You know, where people were working and that that could be something that's portrait as opposed, it's easier to read, you know, an index of numbers. From top to bottom than across, so. You know, some good portraits of people. And then demographic information. So there's there's just so much to work from. But it it definitely, looking at them and walking around, we we need a medium that's going to hold up in the heat. And. And we need bigger pictures and less text. And and now more than ever, because. Just. People don't read anymore, so.
Yeah, if I could just add. Similar to what Amy did touring around. It did become obvious that there was a consideration, we needed to make a consideration for. Location and context for whatever was on going to be presented. And there are, as you pointed out, there are certain sites that really. Suggest particular themes. Saw that in a couple of spots. As I was, happened to be doing it, I was scooting around in my my Jeep. I wasn't walking. But there are certainly folks who wouldn't mind doing that walk, maybe. You know, the thirteenth panel down at the bottom of the hill is a little far for some, but. I like the idea of a walking tour tour concept as well. That kind of thought came to mind. With the vendor panel, I I thought similar to what you pointed out, Amy, that. Some way of modifying these panels on the fly would be. Handy. That occurred to me as well. Having, and this is selfish. Looking inward to my upbringing here. For most of me and and my. Friends is is, you know, growing up in in Clarkdale, Pex Lake. Verde Valley Golf Course Country Club was a. Huge part of our lives. Pex Lake was Fourth of July for many, many, many years. That's where we did it. Yeah, and and so that, I think, you know, for some, it wouldn't be everybody. For some, there would be no. Relatable context, but that was one thing I felt like could be maybe become a portion of what we did. Yeah. Certainly, the business block. You know, when you recall every one of those buildings being occupied along Main Street with a. If not thriving, at least functional business. Maybe there's something to be said there about about businesses, you know, business owners, and maybe that the component there. I thought about the snow cap which became Su Casa. And when it was, you know, no bigger than this room, the entire building. And Steve Wambekers mom, Normie, ran that. And God knows what kind of photos he might have of that. Of that site potentially even. So. Just those were just some of the notes I jotted down as I kind of strolled around.
So perhaps. A great thing to do would be, and once again, it's like, how do we organize it? How do we collect the information? To throw something out in our in the weekly newsletter that says. To have reminisce, you know, stories to tell or reminisce, you know, or information about the snow cap. I'd never heard of the snow cap, so it was Su Casa when I got here. So, yeah, so the snow cap, Su Casa. Or, as you said, the Pex Lake and the golf course, those kinds of things, so we can. We can throw out a line and see what we can reel in and then go from there and and then, of course, do the research and see if there are themes. But it would it would be. It would be great to see if with this particular project. It could. It could be from the ground up with the community and and start there so that the community feels like. They really have a piece of it. Thank you.
Yeah, as a kid, I I grew up at the Clarkdale swimming pool. And we went to the grocery store, which is, you know, of course, where Drake is now, the the corner building. And and on certain days when we wanted. Really good candy, we went to the newsstand, but it was very scary. To go in the newsstand. You didn't go in there by yourself because there was lots of. Lots of lots of big men sitting at the bar and you had to walk up to the bar. So, I mean, but we would go in there and and get our get our coke and our candy bar, you know, that was. With friends. So, yeah, those are those are childhood memories. Exactly. And the and the the Pex Lake. Barbecue, the Kiwanis did a huge barbecue. My dad was part of that and we we camped. We were there for three days and they did a big big pit barbecue. For the Fourth of July out there. And, you know, I don't even know how many, I don't, as a kid, but, you know, they roasted the pit, the pit. Pigs in a pit and, you know, and then then did this big serving and sold food and whatever. So it was a it was a whole big thing for my family to hang out up there. So it was. Yeah, those those were. Those were. But that's just my history. That's not full history. It's obviously just like our.
But but that's exactly my point. It's that we just need to set a temporal parameter and decide. I mean, we want to go as far back as the smelter or the establishment of the town. But there were, you know, do we embrace those that lived here? Before. And discuss that. Evolution. And then, you know, do we break it down and make sure? That we're hitting the generations or do we do it by decades? You know, how how do you want to break it down? So there's all kinds of really wonderful information that we can embrace and incorporate. But I think first we need to wrap our minds around or come up with a plan or a. Formula or an instrument. How do we want to organize things? Where are we going to put them? You know, how do we want to present it? So and and I don't have those answers, but I think we really need a plan. And perhaps we get more information on how to come up with a plan by throwing out a few. Requests for. You know. Information. But I'm crazy for the oral history thing.
I love the conversation around all of this, and I have some thoughts that might be able to be a little helpful regarding a lot of things that I heard. So when it comes to the callouts, I think any pictures, oral histories, personal anecdotes. That we can then compile and then sift through and then see what's going to be. Relevant for like the website perhaps, so we can compile all those stories and not turn anyone down from sharing. But we can also share specific things on the the panels themselves. Another thing that I wanted to discuss was the geologic time and, you know, we have smelting for a reason, right? And that's because there's some sort of minerals that we wanted to extract, so tying in that geologic history could be. Hey, this is why the smelting kind of happened in the first place and tying it that into the where the smelter is located and. Not just. This is what the operation looked like, but this is the minerals that were being extracted. This is the geologic deposit and how they were geologically formed here. What were the the causes of this formation to occur in Jerome? Oh, sorry. Some other things that I remember that I I connected with some folks and had them meet with me and tell me some of their personal stories. And I know some folks would be happy to share and be recorded. Some of the things that they talked to me about was the quinceañeras. So they would host dance parties in quinceañeras here in town. They'd walk from. Down below in Patio Town and walk up to the dances and obviously during this time, classes and schools were still segregated. So I think it would be important to note that during a large part of this town, there is a it was a segregated community. And. And just that. You know, they had these really fun things too, like the quinceañeras, the events that you were talking about Fourth of July. All those things we can tie in a little bit of the the quinceañeras and some other things. Also for incentivizing or promoting the fact that people can visit all of these, we could do a geo check in. So you can scan the code and say, hey, I visited this. Location, I visited, you know, all of these, and when you're finished with that, you are able to. Come to the Community Development Building and grab like the I completed the historic tour of Clarkdale sticker or something.
National Park Service Passport Book Stamp.
Oh, a buck stamp.
Hey, at the Monuments and Park Service, I I have a passport. For the National Park Service and Monuments and I get a stamp.
Lose their minds over those things.
Pardon?
People lose their minds over those things.
You don't think it's important?
No, I'm saying people love them. They go crazy. Yeah.
So if we do something like that, that would, you know, help people like I got my my geo stamp from this location. And once you're completed, you maybe we could, you know, find some sort of prize that would really, you know, people would really enjoy. And then a final note, I think it'd be so fun to talk about the boroughs, the the donkeys that. Lived here and we're just walking up and down these streets. And just having a blast, and I think that would be really fun over at the park because they had those turnstiles, you know, to make sure that they didn't. Enter the park willy nilly, and I think that'd be such a fun story.
So so this is why coming up with some kind of instrument. Or plan, because, I mean, we're kind of talking in terms of a geomorphic history and an anthropomorphic history, you know, so. And you're absolutely right when you so looking at the backside of the number nine panel, like it's really cool to look at the front side. And you got the smelter and the cement plant, and you go around to the other side and you don't want to back up. Because it's, but if you go to the other side, then there might be a way. So it's a little off, but you could get a picture of Jerome up there. And then tie, you know, that would be the the geology. Industry panel right there because you get all three of them from one prospect. Just don't back up. Should put up a rail or something.
Another thing that I had thought about was. I it would be great to to highlight periods of time like the Sanagua people. Obviously, we have an expert here, so. That should be easy to kind of compile quickly and point people to, hey, if you want to learn more about the Sanagua people. Does it too?
I think that's also an opportunity to do some outreach to tribal communities out outside of just this area. The Park Service consults with. Twelve different tribes, all with a connection to. To Sanawa, so. That may be an opportunity as well, and I think related to that, you had mentioned in the last meeting that there was some outreach to Yopai Apache Nation. I'm guessing. That's where we got the books here, but is there any update on on that?
They are compiling a lot of history for us and then everything that they will compile, we will. Honorably display in a way that makes sense, the most sense to the the tribal nation.
So when you say honorably display, we're going to integrate it into this project is what you mean. Okay.
Is there any other discussion? I think, I mean, I think if there. If there isn't, I'd like to see if we can maybe put some objectives out, some things to do before the next meeting or. In the next few meetings, tangible things.
I I'm well, so. So I've kind of thrown out a lot of information, and I guess my next question is. I could come up with. When I say an instrument or a plan or an outline, it's like. I could put together three or four. Different ideas or different means by which we could organize our history. And when I say that it's. Shall we? Shall we think chronologically? And think in terms of twenty-six panels? And each panel is organized chronologically? Do we want to think in terms of thematically? Or we have thirteen panels that are about humans and fifteen panels that are more driven by the environment and geology? Should we? Should we put together some ideas on how we would organize them or? Do we want to start looking at what information? And the other way to look at it is, do we throw out a wide net, put out a call, see what comes through? I mean, we can't have twenty-six panels on the great boondockers that used to happen down by the river, and we could easily get, yeah, I mean. If if they were doing a history of my old neighborhood. You know, it's like. Everybody wants to talk about the good times they had growing up, but we could, you know, essentially get a lot of really wonderful memories. So do we want to come up with, we're going to do. A certain percentage is going to be on. The beautiful stories that you were telling, a certain percentage is going to be on business and industry. Do we have an idea of how we want to organize it, or should we come up with a couple, or do we? Go for searching for information first?
I I like the idea of having some organizational framework in mind or two or three various ones, perhaps. So that we're flexible enough that when we do gather input, if something comes forward that seemed outside our purview, we say, well, wow, we could need to make room for that. On the other hand, I'm I am worried a little bit, Amy, that if we don't have that. At least idea of two or three themes. Then we might allow the information we gather to sort of direct the themes and there might only be one or two. Kind of you alluded to, so. I I don't know if I want to go personally go any further than just considering a decade by decade approach. Versus a thematic approach, industry, people, geography, geology. Or what whatever other theme we might use. I like just kind of having those out there. As opposed to maybe as nailing one down.
Oh, I wasn't suggesting we nail one down. I. I think we we need to have. Okay, let me see if I can clarify because maybe I I wasn't. There's a lot of information. If we organize it into themes and I I'm not a big fan of chronologically myself and I it's when I was teaching, it's like if you could get it within a hundred years. That's good for me. So we, I mean, surely we want to cover business and industry. And surely we want to cover geology, which would naturally be embraced in industry, and we want to talk about humanity that lived here. So. We could come up with five broad topics and then figure out how to fit them in. Because even though we're going to have twenty-six panels. When you think about how much a person can really read and how much imagery is going to take up those panels. It's not going to be a lot. So so I can come up with some standard organizing concepts or themes. That we can start to. Organize the details into. And then we can walk around and see if more locations lend themselves to those themes. I think we can all do that. Just don't back up at number nine. And I and and I really think that going down, walking, doing a walking tour. Of all of them. If you just start at thirteen. You get the hike up over with first and getting back to your car at thirteen won't be such a hard time.
And and I don't think we, I don't think we need to focus. At all on modern. I don't think we need to come up. How whatever, whatever organization is, I don't think we need to come up to. Main Street and focus on modern buildings as long as I, as much as I'd love to see my ten twelve lounge on there. They they just changed too much, so I think we need to figure out. How to how to. You know, kind of come up, come up to current times, but not necessarily focus on. Main Street, Clarkdale.
When was the bar built?
Originally nineteen fifty-eight.
That would be on the Historic Registry in Tucson.
Yeah, no, and I, yeah. But but I'm but I'm talking about more modern than that than that, like come up to, yeah. And I don't, I have to think about what my timeline would be, but I I don't think we need to come up to it anywhere in our, this is a his, to me. This should be a historic walking tour or or. Signage tour, whatever we call it. It doesn't need to come up to absolute current time.
So does that mean we eliminate tourism? Because that's current.
I thi- I think maybe what Carrie is rather than focusing on, for an individual business to talk about the history of downtown as a whole, the Miller Building, the grocery store for so long, and then the newsstand and then other businesses that were in some of those other buildings.
Oh, I'm still on, sorry. Yes, but as an example, the newsstand, we all know is going to remain the newsstand. But right now it's under construction. What if these people were not going to make it the newsstand? What if they were going to change the name? I mean, I've heard they're not going to. What if when they open, they're the Mingus Mountain Inn or whatever, you know? So I'm saying, do we, we don't need to necessarily come as current as we are now to talk about what's, what's on Main Street. Now, one of the panels had a picture of Main Street or, or a mention, I don't remember which one, a mention of the businesses on Main Street, but, but many of those were not even there anymore. They had already closed and gone. So we don't, although we talked about making some of them interchangeable, so that, so that we could change what's on them, but what, what is in Clarkdale will continue to change and evolve. So I think that this is more about the history that brought us up to a certain point, what, and we need to identify what that point in time is. Um, but, but not worry so much about going past that. It, it doesn't, this isn't about advertising who's here now. This is about giving a history of what's been here in the past.
I understand what you're saying, but I would say also too, there's an opportunity to talk about like continuity and how things happen here. I mean, the bandstand would be a great example. The bandstand is still used in the same way that it was conceived of to be used a while ago. We could pair those things together and those could be a great example of a, you know, a Clarkdale cultural thing that happens. Yeah.
No, no, I'm, I'm thinking. I know, I used to have a colleague who told me I should always have bangs because everybody knows what I'm thinking by my forehead. What, what? I don't do hats. Hey, um, so what would the date be for your cutoff? See? Yeah, no, because that's, I mean, it's like, where do we start? If we're, we're going to talk about geology, wh- where do we start? And then where, where do we end? Yeah. So I think, I think if we have some themes and then we start looking at how the, the information comes to us and, and it will boil down. But, but I, it, it is about continuity. I mean, there's been a little restaurant right there across from the park, evidently for a long time and it's changed names and, and one of our, did I, am I remembering inappropriately, but didn't we have some panels that were tourism on there? Yeah. So we, we did have a location where we could promote local businesses in, in there. And I, I think that's still a good idea, but that's just me right now. I'm, I'm still wrapping my mind around what's a modern building. So. Okay, thank you.
Well, could I maybe recommend between now and our next meeting that all of us think about five broad themes and, um, a time period and be ready to sort of talk about that more?
We're all making notes on the home. It got quiet in here. We're all ready.
It could be more than five. I don't know. It'd be ten. Maybe not ten. That's a lot. Five, five's good.
Well, yeah, whatever, but just whatever comes to mind, I think. Between five and ten even.
Okay. Yeah. And then we can see where the, we can see where the crossover is and, you know, compare and contrast. It'll be fun.
No, the window frames came from the, the smelter powerhouse building. Yeah, they were removed from that building. That was donated in by the smelter, uh, the guys that worked there at that timeframe. Railroad rails were donated by the, um, Verde Canyon Railroad. Um, those, um, cement plant donated the cement. That's how it all came about. As far as the physical piece goes, the, the panels were all done through the, um, the old, the old, the heritage board that we used to have, conservancy board. And through the, the, um, historical museum that we have in town, that was all brought to them. And then we had many sessions where the panels were presented to the public through the town offices as well. They were all presented and went through that way. Um, one of the themes that we did, it might not was, um, on Main Street. Reason we didn't talk about the buildings on Main Street was because there's already a marker on Main Street that talks about the buildings. So that's why we didn't talk about the, those buildings. And there was some other things that were similar like that. Reason we didn't talk about the cement plant was because there was a cement plant display in the Historical Society that we're trying to get them to the Historical Society. And we answered questions in the Historical Society, those questions that I guess we could put on the street. I understand that, but we were trying to get people to go in this tourism walk, slow tourism walkway or whatever, to go to that Historical Society. The grant was through the Office of Tourism that funded the entire project and then, um, and so forth.
I think if we want to ho- host specific information somewhere, we could just set then say, um, a call to action. Let's visit the, you know, historical museum for this and this type of information or a more holistic, you know, view. So we can do calls to action and like, um, or calls to the website, things like that, which would, um, hold that same energy.
When I opened my bar, I had a, one, a guy give me one of the tea box markers for one of the teas at the golf course. And it got stolen out of the men's bathroom. I know, I was so bummed. I, I kicked myself for, I'm like, why? But it was, you want to put stuff out for people to see, like, and enjoy. Yeah. It lasted, it was gone in less than a year.
Okay, uh, if there's nothing else, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Also move.
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Okay, meeting adjourned.